So Heavenly Father, we just bow our hearts and our heads in your awesomeness and your kingdom. Father, we thank you. We thank you for your promise that you're with us and you're your plan for the city and for each one of us. Father, we ask for your guidance, for your peace, for your wisdom, that that's going to flow all through the meeting, that you will be done and you will be all everything that happens today. Give you all the praise and all Jesus' name.
James, would you like to...
We are grateful to the faithful United States of America and a new republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
I'd like to add something to the agenda discussion of City Parks, AEC.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment for AEC, discussion of City Parks?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor, or second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. Next up is public appearance. Mr. Alberg, if you'd like to come.
My name is John Alberg. I'm a Nelson resident, director at the Alberg Academy on 185 Bluey Avenue. I'm addressing the council for two reasons. First, I would like to give a quick update on our first year here in Nelson. And secondly, I would like to comment on recent meetings. We finalized our first year in Nelson, a year of great support from students, families, and citizens. We all enjoy a safe and peaceful community. Your parks, playing pickleball, soccer on the ball field, using both your playgrounds, both your playgrounds, and now lately during summer school, we're enjoying your hiking program. This coming year, it looks like we will be around 25 students, which is below our max of 30. We are finalizing the purchase of the neighboring property from Warrior Medical, securing the contingency of the variance. So come August, we will now own all the land outright, and we are very happy to be part of the Nelson community.
Congratulations.
Given the council's speedy and professional handling of the school application and your support of the school and students, the last council meetings have been surprising. They have been filled with emotional outbursts between members and a seeming lack of understanding of law and processes. Attending citizens expressed strong support for the immediate park improvement on Pickens Street and frustration for lack of decision-making. We heard comments like, "This was not good for my child to see," and "I have to be more knowledgeable to be able to express my opinion." Council members should find both comments alarming. You are serving we the people, which means listen to, understand, educate them if necessary. You have a humbling task, for sure. You begin every meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag and a prayer. With the pledge, you commit to the Constitution of America to follow the law for we the people and not let your own emotions interfere. By bowing your head in prayer, you recognize we need divine intervention and support to be able to serve we the people in integrity, civility, and wisdom. It's my desire for all of you to live up to the extraordinary obligation you have accepted as council members, to lead Nelson's toward a continued safe, peaceful, liberty, and quality of life. The main issues at hand seem to deal with quality of life improvements. You already have $300,000 plus unreserved dollars, and this amount is increased with some $200,000 every year that the county deposits for city use. They give the money. They provide expertise. They are responsible for the projects to meet current laws. The city council's job is to be the quality assurance in each step and to communicate city and citizens' desire in each project. No reason for emotion. Listen to the people and follow the law with wisdom. The three projects that are on the discussion seem to be Park at Pickens Street. We have already begun the process. Next, there is an engineering drawing required by the law. No biggie. Of that final design, money is available. Citizens want it, and the country does all the heavy lifting. Number two, the water tower is a disgrace to the community and needs ASAP improvements. Sounds like county money and expertise can be used. There should be no hesitation here. It has to be fixed. The park at the School Street, the third project, it seems to be a larger project, which will take time. However, there are some immediate issues, less expensive, that can be addressed, that would give quality of life to children using it now. The basketball field, retaining wall has already been decided on and is in progress. The basketball field can be made acceptable, safe, until new, more long-lasting solutions are had. Replace the stones from the court with sand or grass and add a fence to stop balls from going into the ditch. This is an easy decision that would improve quality of life for Nelson's youth using it on a daily basis. The beauty of the situation is, you can do all three at once, because others do the work for you. You just have to use inside wisdom, which you already have. I realize that there may be error in a few of the details in what I observed, but what I ask from all of you is to live up to your role. You are the bedrock of America. Please do not reflect emotional and manipulative actions in this regard for we the people experienced on the national scene. There is movement all over the country deciding who we are, our desire for liberty, and be governed by law, not by individual agendas and motions. Let Nelson City Council be one of the role models in this effort. Yes, it is a daunting and humbling task, but it is worth it. Coming from another country, you have two other models, and you don't want either of them. In the first model, one person makes all the decision. In the second, the country I come from, you can have your own opinion, provided it is the same as all the others. So let us stop fighting one another, a fight for liberty for our community, our children, and grandchildren, beginning with a beautiful and safe path. Blessings to all of you. Thank you, please.
Can I get any other public appearance for tonight before we get started? Let's move on to approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for June 7, 2021 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the June 7 minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the June 24, 2021 work session?
I'll make a motion to approve the June 24, 2021 work session.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Can I get a motion to approve the June 24 special call meeting? That's June 24, 2021.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special call meeting on June 24.
Can I get a second?
I'll do it.
All in favor? Yes, okay. Department reports. Officer down, if you would come and give your report.
Go ahead. There's new reports here. If you let them know, I'm just briefly touch base on the new precinct between... I know everybody's here to hear me, what I have to say tonight, so for those of you who haven't been at the meetings, we have started a precinct at our Ball Ground location, which is right off Even Flow and Highway 5. Previous years, I've been here 19, it's always been a traffic office where our traffic unit works out of, but the sheriff, we've opened that precinct with a limited amount of people. You'll continue to see it grow. You'll continue to see us more involved inside the city of Nelson and Ball Ground since we're up here. But the activity report for this last month for June, and this will kind of give everyone an idea of just calls for service, like 911 calls. This isn't self-initiated stuff where we might do a traffic stop or something like that. These are just calls for service. We had two suspicious people, one alarm and one mentally ill person. And when I say mentally ill, that could be someone who's suffering from, say, onset of dementia, right? It's not someone who's, say, bipolar, schizophrenic. It covers the whole basis of mental illness. We located a male in the park down here that was shooting a bow and arrow. We just asked that he moved locations, because there could be people walking, and if you miss a target, we don't want somebody with an arrow in their leg. We also had another male that was down here at the bathrooms, and we did everything within our power to remove him from the area. And, you know, he didn't belong necessarily in the city of Nelson. He was probably coming from somebody's house. And like I said, we had an elderly female call, and she is suffering from dementia, so we were able to make contact with her family members to make them aware of everything that was going on. And then we had an alarm call, which turned out to be just a false alarm. So other than that, not getting into too many details, but we did do some work with our undercover, our cottage units in the city of Nelson. I know several people drove by and were stopping and taking pictures of us while we're sitting out there, which is fine, but that's what all the police presence was up on Pickens Street. So we're just trying to eliminate problems that, you know, arise or citizen concerns that we have within the city. We try to take care of them as quickly as we can. Does anybody have any questions for me, or about the sheriff's office, or... Perfect. I know we'll talk about your neighborhood, but my card is back here on the counter. If anybody needs it, it's got my cellphone number and my email address. If anyone has any issues, feel free to grab a card and get in contact with me. Thank you.
We've got a couple more letters from... A couple more letters from one of our youth addressing the council and mayor, and I'll read it out loud. "I'm a 17-year-old resident of Nelson. I love being in this city. I love being in the community. I also love being able to play basketball and street football. Riding bikes with my brother is a hobby of mine, and I think it is a great idea to fix up our park and provide some shade for bystanders and players alike. It's time for us residents to speak up about what we want in our city, what we want our city to be presented, how we want our city to be presented. I would like to play basketball there at the court, but it doesn't feel safe. It's a mess. This plan would change that. What we as residents of Nelson do, what can we as residents of Nelson do to help our community, and what can I do to help this project happen? P.S., don't forget after dark lights for the court. It would look cool and be a safe place to shoot hoops. Me and my brothers can't wait. The Wright brothers." We also received another letter from Josh Reyes. "Good afternoon. My name is Josh Reyes, and I live at 1840 Pickens Street. I want to write to show my support for the plans to upgrade the park across the street. I've enjoyed playing basketball, playing at the basketball court many, many times with my wife, my brother, my niece, and dad just yesterday, and I hope to continue enjoying it with my daughter when she grows up as well. As new parents just beginning to start our family, it gives us a great sense of community to still look out our window and see other families and kids enjoying the park as we do. As grateful as we are for the park, it's obvious that it has seen better days. The chain link fence is coming apart on multiple sides, and there's also a large chunk of metal on the court sticking right straight up through, sticking straight up, just waiting for someone to injure themselves. In addition to the safety concerns, I can also find trash from the park receptacles in my yard at any given time. And again, I want to say that I'm super grateful for what we have the privilege, grateful that we have the privilege of having a park, but I do believe it is in need some love and attention, and it's within budget and we're proceeding to do so. Thank you sincerely, Josh Reyes." I wanted to read both of those as the part will come up later. And then I want to also address a couple of things, Nathan, that you said about our audit last week. I went back and looked at Tacey Jo, and I actually called her and asked her for, I asked her for, you know, her thoughts on our audit. She says, "We've never had any concerns with funds that were missing. It looks more like entries were made to force something to balance, but we had no concerns fraud." Based on what we were looking at during the audit, maybe it was software. Assist definitely has a history of glitching, and I'll go ahead and interject there. We had 17, was it 17 or 20?
Which one, 15 and 20, on the main computer, and the other computer runs off at the main computer.
So the computer in my office wasn't receiving the updates that Kelsey's received, Kelsey's computer was receiving, okay? So it was causing issues and glitches within Assist. Especially for subledges and for sanitation and property taxes, it would be great if you or Miranda had time to make sure that what is showing is paid or due, and those two systems match what the general ledger shows now. It might even be a good idea for the city to explore different software options. I'm not sure if that's something you guys want to tackle. When I went back and looked at Tacey Jo's audit, she quoted, "The city of Nelson continues to improve, improvements year by year, small errors that can certainly..." These are small errors that can be fixed. She also said, "This is a much different report than they've been able to give in the past, and they're very pleased." So I had some calls after our meeting wanting to know if we had issues with our audit. We do not have issues with audits. So any questions that you have, if anybody wants to see that audit, please feel free to reach out to Kelsey. She'll provide you a copy of it. Okay? And with that said, that's all I have. The military, Cherokee, Cherokee County.
The patents been run in the paper. We need to decide in our meeting for either July 25 or July 22, if you vote on it. We didn't receive the digest until Friday afternoon. So we had an early reading sent to the paper today, has been by today and over the run in this coming, this upcoming paper.
So it's received on July the 9th?
Yep.
Okay.
So it's going to be in this coming paper.
Is this where we're showing we roll back? We will go back for this kind of taxes when I increase for the city.
That's how we've done is rollbacks.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I think it's at .07 something. I don't understand what she wrote on. What dates are the 22nd?
I thought it was the 23rd, because that's her run for four weeks before we can vote on it.
Which would be better for, Nathan, you, Thursday or Friday, the 22nd or 23rd?
They want it, it has to be done before the 26th, which is what she's saying on this...
Whatever's good with that, I should do it.
It should be a fast meeting. It's just...
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, and it should just be done already.
So 7:00 PM, nothing on there except for...
Far as I know, it would just be that.
Well, we can make sure that that's all it is.
Thursday or...
Thursday or Friday, the 20th along?
Thursday, Friday, Monday.
Okay, Thursday, Susan.
I may be out of town, but I'd be back on Fridays.
James?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay. It's just a rollback, so it's not... Thursday, the 22nd.
Good night. Something for...
No, I have the pronoun thing, Susan. That's everything. I want to...
The general fund is $603,716. Special reserve fund is $74,730. SPOS 4, $664,359. Pickens SPOS 2, $586,725. SPOS 5, which is Cherokee, $511,972. Cash reserve is $166,367. SPOS, the Pickens SPOS 2020, the most recent, is $279,663. And these were as of last Wednesday. So it didn't include any on Friday.
Asset protection, one second.
Unfinished business, discuss and vote on retaining wall at School Street, AEC.
The company that was originally chosen did not include drainage for the back of the, which is your face drainage on it, strictly a design fee. This company does include back drainage, I know. Susan actually talked to them today and may have a better idea of this than I do. So I don't know if you want to...
I called and I got clarification on what with this bid is. And it's basically what it is, is it's a design and construction drawings for the wall. They don't do the work, but they will do what's necessary to make sure that you have the right type of wall being constructed regarding the length and width of the wall, the height of the wall. They didn't think that their time, they have a minimum. They have $450 for them to come out and look at it.
Survey thing, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a site survey. It's not a survey like a, you know, topo or tax survey. It's just for them to come out and look at it. And then they didn't think that it would cost more than their minimum fee for the design, which is $1,200. So I think you're looking at about $2,000 for them to come out and look at it and to come up with a design of construction materials and things they think that would work to actually have a retaining wall that would hold. There is a small possibility, they said that they don't see it necessarily happening, but that there's some kind of sheer test that can be done if we want them done, but unless we really needed them, they didn't think they'd have to be performed. That'd be another $1,800.
Yeah.
And then what they would do, if you wanted them to, they would then, as the wall's being constructed, they would charge you a daily fee of $225 to come out and inspect it every time that work is done to make sure it's going according to plan, to the construction plans.
If they wanted, that's not required.
Exactly. So that's what this is. This is just for the cost. And I think, you know, it's prudent to have it done properly. And we can discuss this more when we go to do the parks. I mean, I'm sure, I think $2,000 is reasonable to at least see what it's going to cost to actually get that wall where it should be for the basketball court. I think the bigger issue down the line is how much is that wall really going to cost to construct, and how does that fit in the plans of the park? And is that where it should be? But that's another discussion. But for this, it's like $2,000. It's going to cost you $2,000 to find out what kind of wall you should put there.
And include the drawings.
And it would include the drawings.
And they do cover the drainage of this. I'm gonna email where I clarify that as a request to you behind the proposal.
But they can work with Michael Pitt on the park design and everything, make sure that's in with the park design, the back of the court.
This was strictly to do...
Strictly for that wall.
A retaining wall.
He said, I mean, this was, whatever our overall site drainage would be, that's a whole different thing. If you want to use him when we start that park project, then you could have him do services as well. But right now, I would think that main concern would be the integrity of the road, making sure that we get a wall there that would, you know, the integrity of the road.
That actually fits the bill.
So this would be a separate issue than any...
But I mean, you know, Michael Pitt needs to be involved a little bit since it's a park.
I could call him and ask him, but I don't believe that it's going to be an issue. I mean, you're still going to have to have something like that. And I believe you'll end up having to have something all the way down through there. I mean, right now, there's a marble wall there that's done its job, but it's kind of...
Yeah, I think it's just, this is just a law issue. It's not really anything to necessarily do with the park or the basketball court.
If eventually you wanted to do paving right there or something, then you'd have to come in, and I'm sure the wall would have to be built up and something like that. I'm not an engineer, but I'm sure that it could be worked with.
Do you guys want to go ahead and vote on having this company here, since they do? It's all...
I would suggest, just because it is an estimate, Susan and I talked with us today, is giving a little bit of padding there, just because they are going to get an estimate based on square footage, so we don't have to hold another meeting if it goes over by $500 or something, because it costs $300 to hold a meeting. So if we pad it by $500, $1,000, just to avoid...
I would like to say, I did speak with another company who basically was offering the same service, and their price was at $2250. So they're running in on the same thing.
So the total now, this one here would be...
At the minimum, $1,200 plus the $450 site. So you're looking at roughly $1,650 minimum.
And, I mean, I think Susan and I were thinking it's going to come in right under $2,000, but I'm just saying if you pad it a little bit, just say, you know, approve it up to $2,500 or something. That way, if it does, if there is some flexibility there, we don't have to hold a meeting and pay $300 to hold a meeting to approve, just an overage.
What do you think about the $2,500? About $700 over. Can I get a motion to approve the construction drawings, estimates for the Pickens Street, no, sorry, for a discussion for the retaining wall at School Street for the $2,500 for the engineering drawing fees?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All in favor? Yes, thank you. Discuss and vote on construction drawing estimates for the Pickens Street park project.
And I did stick pricing in there for just the court, for the estimate, because I know we talked about that at that work session meeting, and we didn't have pricing. So you get some pricing just for the court. It's behind all of those estimates, anyway. There was like a low end, high end, a mid-range range from $120 to $101, $1,000 or $1,000. And this is their price. If we were to... And this is their price, if we were to part of a Cherokee, they might get some flexibility and might end up with a better price. This was just in going and getting prices from what?
But what we're just working on tonight is the fee or the drawings, correct?
Yeah, that was just because he had said that he would send it over in the last meeting and he said that it would be discussed. So, just making sure that they, they was in there.
And that's great to have the different courts, but it's not really as comprehensive.
No, but it is not yet, and we don't feel that it, the cost of the court itself was not as high as it's...
So the total cost of those construction drawings for sixty thousand, what's for the wall?
I think we can find one of the best prices. They're just putting on the topic. You can discuss it for actually... My rate is on the sixteen thousand. Rates is, we just have, this is happening at sixteen thousand. And I think we just got to go from there.
Theirs was the lowest.
I mean, that was the best, for the city, I think that was the best price. The other prices are different.
Can I get a motion to discuss the construction drawing estimates for the Pickens Street, Pickens Street Park project? Motion to discuss, is that what you said?
No, you'd be doing a motion to approve, and then you'd have to be discussing after you have a motion.
So we need a motion to approve?
If there's, I mean, you can have any discussion, but if you want to go ahead and entertain a motion, you can, and then have discussion after it's been decided.
So we can go ahead and discuss then?
We can discuss it, yes.
Well, I think that if we're going to discuss, then we had the three bids last time and two of them were quite costly. And then we, we had Michael Kidd come in and, and go over his bid and what he, where his, his cost came in and they were considerably lower than the others. And I think that, other than that, I don't know what cares, we discuss the part of the cost.
Anybody have anything they'd like to say about the engineering drawings?
Do you have numbers, just the quarters there? Yeah, that's just, that hasn't happened yet, we still haven't the drawings done, but I just stuck that in there because he had said, when Rose went to maintenance.
When he does the drawings, then, once you get the drawings, then you, then the council will use the drawings.
Actual pricing.
He, he will come back and then you can take a look and you can give him what you, what you like to see added, what you like to see removed. This is just to move forward with getting engineering drawings for that park.
To about fifteen, sixteen thousand, thirteen thousand. So if we go with this, he does the drawings, if we want to remove something.
Yeah, yeah, he, he'll go ahead and do a, he's under rendering, now they'll do an engineering, tell you what can be, you know, what can be put there and you can move stuff around, stuff that's needed, once the drawings are, the drawings are just a necessary part of spending these lost dollars.
And Cherokee's often going to partner with the Montagues to help get little bids on stuff on that stuff.
And there were, there are all books, there was some stuff, and we bring that up too. We have a letter that basically, they, they said because there was such a small amount of that that's in Pickens County, that we could use Cherokee dollars, we did not even use Pickens salvage, so that... There's really nothing going on up there, other than i- if you decided to put a slab with a picnic bench for people to sit at. That's really the only thing that would be up there, and it's a minimal cost. So, they said they would allow it because the majority of that property is in Cherokee. Any other questions on, on the engineering drawings, are we ready to vote? James?
I'm good.
Can I get a motion to approve the construction drawing estimates for the Pickens Street park project for Michael Kidd for sixteen thousand?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Do we get to ask why they're opposed?
You can ask, they don't have to explain. It's been voted on, so it failed to pass.
Okay, next up is the city park discussion. Nathan, our Dave, you brought that one up, you want to start it off?
We went around and touched some pictures of our city parks. Anybody wanting to go up here and look at them, or pass it around? That rust sticking up everywhere in the kiddie park, that's where we didn't focus our attention on this, what we've already got out there.
This one over here?
This one over here, and then the retaining wall.
We talked about getting rid of this one here and giving more equipment to a church when I first got here, because it's, it's in district area. And we already have, it is there, and we already have a kiddie park down here, so we don't have anything for our, for our bigger, for our teams.
That's what I'd like to focus on. My home is our central city park, for everybody who uses it.
What's your people want? Do you call them?
The ones that opt, the ones that opt out too, that's what they, they used to show, want to make up and take pictures of this and write in.
There's three hundred plus people that want, that want about to have basketball court.
How many people do we have in this?
Thirteen hundred. Yeah, well, we didn't call them all, should we call them all then?
That's not necessary. I didn't come over here to argue you, I respect your opinion, you made me respect mine.
I am, but I'm a voice for the people, David.
I am too.
You're not, you're not, they, they've been showing up at these meetings, sir, and you're not, I'm sorry.
Okay. If they don't, if they don't bite away a vote, that's an election candidate.
There is.
We have to recall. We still, when are we going to get pricing on walking trail? I mean, all of our attention's going to one thing, not what we've already got through.
No, sir, councilman.
Have we got any pricing on walking?
We have made numerous phone calls, numerous phone calls, and because of the backlog that the county's getting and, and everywhere, we haven't been able to get pricing. Can you have, probably, I emailed very hard this week to ask, and we had to have him come check the storm, the storm water stuff before we can have anything done on the concrete. And I emailed him to ask him to come and check it, and I've not gotten a response back yet. I talked to him before I went on vacation, but I don't have any answer yet.
We can make a lot of stuff down here in our city park, for everybody.
Yes, that's true. We can also make a nice area up on the Pickens Street for those people who, if it serves their area, where, where those kids can walk and use that basketball court as well. We need both, it's not like we need only one. There's, it's okay to have both. It's all right to have a small park and a big park. I think our community is big enough for both, and I think that the people would appreciate both.
And I respect your opinion, what about Ray Hill?
And I respect yours as well.
I mean, what are we going to do for Ray Hill over here, that they can't walk there, say, if he's car drive? They can't crawl out like that over here.
Well, it would be the same for those people as well.
They can't walk down here to the central?
Well, they can then walk back up, no, a lot of people cannot. It's, it's, it's the same argument one way or the other. So, yes, I think that the city can support both. I don't know why they couldn't. I think that...
I respect your opinion.
Thank you.
Small as the city is, I'd, I'd like to see the, focus on a little spot, our, our park area that we have. Expanding it, repairing it.
We have a...
We can build a basketball court down there, we can build whatever we need to.
We have a, we do have a plan that, that Michael Kidd, we were rendering that he did, that is part of the Cherokee County SPOS that's coming out, and there's money for that. You got money for both, I mean, you have plenty of money for both.
We talked about doing stuff down there two, three years ago.
And, and at the same time, discussing the Pickens Street part of it.
Did you know how much that walking trail is going to cost? For the retaining, that we've already approved, does anybody have any idea what that costs?
I do not have an updated cost on that. And the reason is because concrete, concrete you're not going, you can't currently get it right now, so...
But that has nothing to do with, with the park discussion per se. What, when the park for down here was looked at, the Pickens Street park was also looked at, and it was put on our capital budget, improvement budget then. So I don't know, I don't quite understand why you think that we need just one. When this, this, when you have both, it would serve the full community, not just half of the community.
Is there, is there not a way that, that, that a compromise can be made where you can do something? I mean, you've got to have basketball court, that's an established basketball court that's been there for years. Is that, you have plenty of money, is there a reason why you can't fix that basketball court? I mean, I'm just asking.
Michael just said, I mean, I got the walking trail, the wall, all of that comes out of parks.
Well, it, it does come out of parks, it comes out of parks in there.
Well, there's, they all have safety issues, it's not just the walking trail. It's the basketball court has safety issues, and it should be repaired, and that park should be done, and the people want that park done.
Yes.
Yeah.
Looking good.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you're accountable to them as to why you, you three don't want it done.
We're letting our main park go is the main reason I'm not voting for it right now. If we had all this down here fixed, like it should be, I would vote yes on continuing with that park.
And they, and we're like...
It's all going to, we're going to have a bunch of nothing eventually.
Two million dollars going from Cherokee.
Two million, how much in parks?
Um, I'd have to go, Marissa right here, but she did say, well, roads was, we did roads and streets and we did public facilities, which encompassed everything in the city, and it's, it's well over a million dollars. You have more than enough money to do that park, anything you want to do down there. And I agree, the park is a kiddie park, our, our eight to twelve, thirteen year olds, there's nothing for them to do on there. And I agree, I think that there's a lot, I, I looked at the rendering for my kid, there's a lot of stuff that can, can go into that area down there to make it a really nice center, but you're not looking at that much money. And I mean, that, that park up there is, I mean, I'm just asking you to reconsider, think about it. I mean, I'm a voice for the people, I don't have a vote, I'm not a council person, but I get phone calls every day, and I've not had but two phone calls from people that did not want that park. And I mean, my, my phone gets flooded. I'm not opposed to any of you council members, none of you. But I'd, I'd like for you to, to just think about people that do live up there. I'm a, I'm a grandma, I would not want to drop my babies off down here at this park with the stuff that's going on right now in Cherokee County and Pickens County. And if, and if my grandson wanted to play basketball, that would, that would, if he fixes court, it would be a nice court, and I could sit there and watch it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's all I'm saying. There's moms up there that, some of those moms that have called me, they don't have cars, they have to walk. That's kind of hill steep, I've walked it. They can, they could go right there and let their kids play, even if that, that little paved area right there, they could ride their scooters on or stuff like that, be out of the street, that, that's all I'm saying. But I do believe that we need, and I, and I hope that we can do that, I know everybody's got vacation plans and stuff, but the first part of August, I'd like to set a, a meeting to where we can discuss in detail our capital improvement. It needs to be done. Look at what's feasible, what's not feasible, and let's come up with a plan.
Yeah, I don't think that one has to be at the expense of the other.
I don't, I don't either, but we got so many things that we...
Well, I definitely think so.
We got so many things that's been let go.
Concrete is an issue.
Look at the basketball court, it's, it's sitting like this, you can lay a bottle down and it rolls down to the woods.
A little bit of that is where it's at, you don't have that issue up there. You could at least get that one fixed, you'd have one for, for the teenagers while we figure out what to do with this one, and how to make a good one down here.
When I talked with Michael Kidd, he, the reason that he wasn't in favor for a basketball court where it's out right there is because of, it stays really damp. And he said, you're never going to have that court, you're always going to have issues with it because of drainage. Even if you put a drainage system under, if you ever have any flooding, you ever have heavy rains around it, and it's in a valley, it's all going to go up underneath that court. Now, what we do have is we, when we went up to Pickens County and we fought for that money for the citizens, that was like a hundred, a million and eight hundred thousand that we're getting from Pickens County, with an additional year, which is around three hundred and twenty-five thousand, somewhere right in there with what we're bringing in right now. This area over here where the, where the old police building is at, that, that would be a great area to put a basketball court there if you wanted to do something like that. And there's, I think we looked at it and the way Michael Kidd had drew that out, that we presented to the county. Is that the one from over here?
Yeah.
The way that Michael Kidd drew that out, he drew it out with a volleyball court up there. But it could definitely be, because it's hot enough, it could definitely be a basketball court. So, but he's not in favor of one down here. This could be fixed up until you could get something for those people. But you're always going to have a drainage issue because it sits down in that hole. So, again, maybe we can, maybe we can come to, you know, maybe we can come to some type of agreement when we meet in August.
The building that's there, we gotta make our mind up what we want to do with that, it's just sitting there.
That's one of the things, that's one of the things that's on my list, and four years ago, it was ninety thousand dollars to repair the walls, to get the wall, the walls are not attached to, the floor's not attached to the outside walls, it was ninety thousand dollars, and it was running rods through it, and the only way that you still are going to have an issue with it holding people on that first floor.
I'm not opposed to tearing it down.
Well, we've already voted to be torn down.
Yeah.
So we can go, we, we just need to get this, once we get the drainage done, well, you need your drainage done first. I mean, you don't have to have it, but you don't want to...
Well, if that building was there, we've already voted on it, it's long ago, further past.
Well, things go off without, it does.
Get rid of all the marble, this loose, the dentures.
Something out there, you can put a bid on, remove in that building. We'll get that in the paper, maybe they'll...
Well, you have to send something out to the people that have stuff.
That, that's okay.
Send them out to them at that time, they've got, they've got...
Yeah, they put the high condition system down, so they'll, yeah, so let them run your back from it, they've never done it even well.
I got to send it to auction.
Yeah, or you can do a small bid on...
No.
We talked about it, and we talked about saving the ten minutes off of it as well, in case we needed it somewhere else, so...
I mean, if that, if that building was there, we could address the ADA issues with that lamp, because you could have a little drive coming in and the slow gradual instead of...
I think on Michael Kidd's rendering, the one that he did down there, there, there is sidewalks that come down, work for, because there's sidewalks through it as well as around it, and it connects the cities there.
Yeah.
And he's got a really good draw, so we don't have a...
Yeah, I have them right here.
I was here when he brought those drawings, but it was done away with the basketball court, it was a protection, I had to...
You have to get it for us. There's one that takes it out, and there was one that...
He put it back in there, but he said it was, he did not recommend it, his, his engineering firm did not recommend it because of where it sits, than the, the water.
And I mean, really, if you, if the building was there, you might, it might, it might be more ideal to move it down a little bit, you know?
Yeah, we can actually talk about that up close.
We can go ahead and get bids for that, maybe that'll, we can get that cleared up pretty quick, but we can, I'll try to set a meeting up for the first of August to review capital improvement projects. Any other discussion on city parks?
I'd like to see if we could, see if we could get Mr. Havland to work with Michael Kidd in Cherokee County, since he's going to put all this together.
He doesn't want to do this.
Michael Kidd does. He's going to put the whole park's plan together originally, isn't he?
We, we can have an offline conversation with him, I'll share with you, yes. Well, he did, he worked with me to, to do a rendering.
We got to get something going on.
That may, that may well have been the case, but now all we have to do is have the drawings and we can go from there. We don't really need him to run point anyway. We have people on this council who can run point on it.
You doing your turn?
I'm just saying, nothing's getting done about the walking trails or anything right now.
Nothing's getting done on the Pickens Park either, is it?
How many, how many emails have we sent, so I'll email, there's just, you have to have this remark, stuff checked, there's just a, there's a process to it and it's not. And you have a lot of people that do not respond to it yet, there's just a presentation issue with, like, even with retaining one down there. I cannot tell you the number of calls, even like the fencing company, does it have, um, the boundary fencing? I've been to their office two times. I emailed them, I called. Just saying, there's a. It's not for lack of effort, I guess is the best way to put it, it's, there's, that's the plan, I think. Barry did tell me that I spoke to him, that, um. Okay, I'll be up for that, I'll be, most of that for. Just to put up some like retaining thing around that, it's falling up there. Cause I've gone to the, literally gone to the place twice and talked to the guy and I'm just kind of, your price.
Lamar, did you, you said anything?
Would, would the council be interested in receiving any public input at this point?
Hi, Libby. So, public input is passed unless y'all vote to reopen a public, uh, appearance. But you can't, you can vote to reopen public appearance, it's passed on the agenda.
Okay.
I'm with you.
Okay, can I get a motion to vote for public appearance?
I'll make motion that we reopen public appearance.
I'm with you.
Oh, I'm with you. Three yes, two no. Four yes is on that. More? Oh, I didn't see your hand.
I, I didn't vote. Well, I mean, no, I mean, I didn't go with yes, so.
I mean, so are you saying you're opposed to reopening the public appearance?
Yes.
So that's in the line.
This is me.
Okay. So we've got three yeses, so if you want to come up with a vote here.
My name's Lamar Kellman, one zero zero five law election. I'm sensing a real sense of frustration in the audience here tonight. And I think we have an opportunity here to present the opinions of the, of, of citizens of Nelson. I'm sure there are a few that have some things on their mind. And the thing that I feel is we, we have kicked the can again. We didn't do anything tonight, we just said no. So, uh, I would like to, if, if this plan is not acceptable, I would like to see the council, particularly the three that continue to oppose this, come up with either a plan for this park or the citywide park. I know, I don't believe you've had your door beat down with good ideas for the last two or three years about being proactive, let's get some things correct. Now they're just coming to the front when they have a specific issue on the table. So, I, I just wanted to reopen, give the people opportunity, because they had no idea of where this was going when, when we had our regular, uh, you know, time to talk. So, that's, that's my point. If anyone else feels they wanna say anything, fine, just don't.
Does anybody else have anything else to say?
My name's Matthew Hudson, I live right across the way. My family and I, retired army, back down here. When we come here, we didn't have nothing. We had nothing. So these parks were the backbone of everything we needed for my kids. Cause we didn't have nothing, nowhere to go, nowhere to be, nothing to do. Now my children are old enough that they wanna be over those basketball courts and play on something else, but I can take them up there with that. One of them's kinda swamped out and earned, the other one, they're eating a second to it right from there. And I understand that whatever's going on, it seems like right now there's gonna be no call, a call to fire between the two of you to get it worked out. Whatever I can do to help y'all, I'll do all the footwork, I'll do whatever you want me to do, I don't charge you nothing. Retired army, whatever you have to do. But I'd like to see something come together for our kids, cause it's for youngins, it ain't for, it ain't none of us, they're not us adults here. You know, none of us is no good, you know, nothing of us. But for kids to be able to get together, be constructed together and not be naughty together, that's a big deal. And I got all girls, so I definitely don't want to be naughty. Y'all already made enough of the deal. But Ms. Sylvia has my number, Mr. Hamby and then everybody, all the other members here, and I'll say Mr. Hamby, cause you personally won't look at that, sorry, nothing, nothing more than that. If y'all wanna leave here, I can get it to you, or get Ms. Sylvia, welcome to it. You want me to come over and do whatever I gotta do, I'll probably, I'll probably gotta do it for you. Won't charge you nothing. But we need, you know, have something happen for these parks that we can make happen for the kids. They're doing nothing for me. They're doing a lot for my youngins, y'all, I know when we moved down here, and we had no money, we couldn't go do nothing. These parks right here is where my kids come, they play, they laugh, they got sun, and mom and dad got a little bit of peace.
Mm-huh.
So, that's what I gotta say about it, you know, just like to see something come to the end of it. Thank y'all for hearing me, by the way.
Hi, my name is Doris Hampton, I live on one five church street in Nelson, Georgia. Um, the design and everything in the park is, um, okay, whatever. Um, but I'm just looking at the church, cause this looks like it's knocking or it's close to the church. And I'm like, where is the church at in, involved in any of this, in the design? What, what's gonna happen to the church?
Nothing, that's across the street from.
But it looks like, the way it's looking, it's like there's not enough room for all of that, what, that you're trying to do. So is the church gonna be knocked out of the way?
No, no, has nothing to do, not at all. That is on the opposite side of the street where the basket cart, court, basketball court is now. And then you've got the water tower and then going, uh, up.
So the road, so hillside road will still like.
Oh, yeah.
Be that one, the three-way or whatever?
Yes.
Cause it just, the, the design just looks kinda like, by this, it just looks like the church is gonna be knocked out of the way.
Absolutely.
So there's, oh, there, there's a, there's a bigger rendering, isn't it?
Yeah.
And you, you can notice that it's, it, and the rendering was too scaled.
And so I wanted to also say that I live in Nelson and I didn't receive any kind of notice about, like you said, you received three hundred and something, but I didn't know that this was going on. So I didn't get a, anything, they didn't get anything, so it's like we all did not know all this was going on.
I did speak with Vivian and Anthony, they, they called me last week, um, I did speak with them last week and they were supposed to get with the petition or something.
Well, they did.
They, and I think they probably will this summer weekend, were you guys out last week or something?
Oh, yeah, we were out town last weekend, yeah, so.
But they, they will, they, I offered them the board so they could clear that up. And then council's not doing away with that area and we're not doing away with hillside.
Okay, well, I was just making sure the church was still standing. That school is ready.
Yeah, the pressing area stays the same, aren't you?
But I think that in that one, there's a, one, there's a.
By the way, there's a park there with a church, they used to park it when it covered.
I mean, I'm asking.
Can you guys have something to say?
Can I?
Yes.
Can I say, do you have that one up?
Yes, ma'am, I would do it.
My name's Penny Flapper. And I'm on Pickens Street. And what Mr. Nathan said about, well, you're gonna do away with, um, the Sonic Lodge anyway, or the better. Or that? That's right. Okay. Why make that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Make that the basketball court. And up there, leave that for the few, very few, now I live on Pickens Street, so there's very few kids that come up to that park, very few. Now, y'all can all sit and say, no, no, no.
So we have, we have cameras up there that show you the plan up there, so, I mean, they do, they do.
I'm not gonna argue, cause I know exactly what I feel in my heart is going on. But when, when did this Pickens Street become an issue, the park up there?
It's been on our capital improvement plan since two thousand thirteen.
When has it become so desperate to get it down?
It is not desperate, it's cleaning up our backlog and our, and our stuff, it is. And we've done a lot of that, we've cleaned up a lot of our roads.
You're just blowing yourself.
My name is Emily Hampton and I live on one forty Hillside Street and, and, um, I just wanna say that I see and I watch a lot that goes on. And it's no way that it should be a park for kids to come up there and play, because it's like elderly people that live right there in that neighborhood. If you would come and see it and you see some of the activities that go on now, how they tearing the park that's up there down, urinating on, on, on the courts and stuff. I see a lot, drug activities, yes. And it's kids that, I don't know if they live in the neighborhood or coming from, you know, different neighborhoods, but for the elderly to see this go on, I don't think a park should be there. My, my father lives there, he's eighty-four year old. We have to listen to the basketball drill all the time, so now he can't see. You know, what's the respect for the elders that live in that little area?
Well, the park's supposed to be, our park's closed at Denver.
Okay. You think.
And if they don't, and if they don't.
They do not.
I live in the same, in the same house. Um, as being like the young, well, not the youngest in here, but I have been in Nelson for a pretty good bit, um. Opening a park, teenagers, it's just not, it's not working. There, you could have an indoor pool, you could have an arcade, but a park, you have this park, you have this park. And like, that's my childhood right there. It would be nice for it to be fixed up, it really would. But once again, these teenagers nowadays, they don't care about no park. All they gonna do is sit on their phones like this, be with their boyfriend all kissy up, which you can do anywhere, but I mean, I respect y'all's decision. But as being, you know, twenty-three, I know what teenagers do, I know what these young kids do. They don't really care for a park, but the little kids, and you know, I wish the little kids did have more than a park to do here. I didn't have that growing up here, I didn't. But, you know, it's just sad. And there's a lot of tension in here and I don't like that we all can't come on one accord. And, you know, it's not about us, it's about the kids and the ones who are, you know, middle aged.
That's right.
My name's Talisha Jackson.
If you could stand and just take your.
She's not.
If y'all can try, if y'all can try to go one at a time, because they are taking down the names of everyone who does public comments, so we can keep some sort of order to it. So if y'all can try to go one at a time, if you can get out and come up to the podium, that's the easiest for everyone to hear you. If you're blocked in, fine, just stand up and project.
Go finish what you're saying.
No, I don't wanna interrupt.
Go finish.
You go.
Yeah.
Mayor Green and council, like I say, my name is Emily Hampton and I've been at one forty Hill Street, one forty Hillside Street for a while. I've seen a lot that goes on there. I've seen one man come in, do what he wanna do without, you know, asking everybody else. I haven't seen any kind of signs go up when, uh, the REA just gonna cut your power off and you got an elderly living in the house, no note. Water being cut off, gas being cut off, no one sending a notice there to let us know what's going on. Because of, you got one person doing everything up there. And that's, yes, Mr. Keith, call that thing, yes. Our power got cut off Friday morning, we didn't know. I'm like, what are y'all doing, we didn't receive a notice. Water got cut off, water flooding down in front of my dad's place. Why? Because they trying to fix a place on Pickens Street. Gas got cut off. Why? Fixing a place on Pickens Street. I'm not one that like to cause trouble or anything, but I wanna see things done right. I've lived in Nelson for a long time. But just for that park to be up there, y'all wanting to build a new park, I'm still saying no to that, because you think it's ugly now? If you go up there and you beautify it and, and come back later and you'll see how ugly it's gonna be.
I think this gentleman was next up. I saw you raise your hand.
William Taylor, eighty-three, barrel way. Sounds like everybody's right, something needs to be done up there, something needs to be done there. I would suggest that mayor and council may get together and put together a priorities list. I don't honestly myself see why a pocket park that would service a small portion of the community should be put in front of the major, I mean, the gentleman stated earlier, that was the place that he took his kids. You're putting in something that's gonna be an active park, eight parking places for one little court, as opposed to dealing with the great big area where this family could be doing this, this family could be doing this, this family could be doing that, people are parked there walking. Again, as the lady said, you're putting something in an area, could be noisy. I mean, personal opinion is that would be a better place for a passive type park. I know the engineer designer was talking about transforming this large park into a more passive area, it makes no sense to me whatsoever. When you take the largest already established facility and then wanna change it to, I may have missed, I have not seen your park design as far as what they've got, but it's. Make that large active area more passive, doesn't make sense, and then to take a little bitty tiny pocket park and make it an activity center, makes no sense, you're not gonna have parking.
I think it's an activity center, I think it's, it's a, it's an established half court now. It's just fixing that up, it's been in our capital improvement plan since two thousand thirteen. The funds are there, the money for this park down here is here, it's coming in, it was just, the rendering for that was just done four years ago when we got, when we were approved for the capital improvement for Cherokee County. Okay, so money's coming in.
Who says the priority of which part gets done first? That's a question, I don't know, I'm just asking.
The council will say, our goal is to clean up our backlog and our backlog spots. That, that was my goal and it was the council's goal as well.
Sounds like the council probably needs to get together and set a priority list of, this needs to get done first and from what I'm hearing and seeing, it might be safety concerns before total redesigns of builds. And I'm sure the city has staff, I've heard about this iron sticking up in the middle of the court up there every time I've been here, has the city gone by, sent, the city hands up there and cut it off yet?
We have.
Great to hear that. It's just, might be.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Okay. And I'm gonna keep it simple and brief, um, so.
Will, can you say your name?
Yep, Will Pyle, fourteen twenty-eight Pickens Street. Adjacent to the park. And I would like to see it fixed up and put back in order. Now, I know we have a plan, so we spent some time putting that together, um, looks beautiful to me. We got some honorary cusses on the council who are just refusing to bend any which way to get us to accomplish that goal, I don't understand it. Now, I'm a newbie in town, so I've only been here over a year, um, and there's been development and I know it affected you and I don't know why, but, you know, we're putting in nice houses there. And it would be nice if that park, you know, was up. Um, we have good neighbors, uh, you know, my buddy David across the street, you know, people, and, and we have more kids than anybody realizes, I don't, I don't understand. There's the little girl, the little redheaded girl, and there's the two girls next door to them, and then I have four grandchildren. And then David has a bunch of kids that come over, um, there's a new little girl, like right up the street with the yellow door house. We will use it. Um, and I'm really kinda getting a little perturbed because I really don't want... I mean, I, I bought the house knowing that was there, but why can't we just fix it up? I don't get it. I, I just don't understand the objection of that little, nice little place and just do it, get it over with, and stop goofing around. We, we, if you listen to yourselves, not necessarily everybody, but it goes from, hey, let's work on this park to, you know, throw out stuff every which way, this park, that wall, buh, buh, buh. Just get it done, and then we'll go to the next one. And I'm sorry that I'm upset, but it just boggles my mind. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else have anything?
My name's D. Johnston. I live at Laurel Lakes. Uh, it seems to me like these guys are willing to do it in a different order, right? He said that he would support if you would get the other things done there. And I'm a builder, so I can't stand when something doesn't get completed and then you move on. So maybe, in order for you guys to get a win, you need to back up. I had an experience with Mr. Hutchison. I had to back up, re-correct, and then got back on the right path, and, and we moved forward.
You got thrown the wool steal on that one. You got thrown the wool steal on that one.
Right, but I had to back up. I had to back up, reassess my situation, realize that I was, my priorities were a little bit off. And I moved forward and we're good. I think you can do the same thing. I think if you wanna win, you gotta work with everybody, back up a little bit, say, okay, they said they'll give you what you want. If you'll back up and, and complete some of the other things. So I like his idea of make a priority list, get together, make that priority list, and move forward together. There's no reason to be, to be going through all this picking. You know? You can get both, and you, we deserve both. The people deserve both. I think you can do it.
I want everybody to look at this picture too. And tell me what is safe and what do the kids gonna get out of those fancy trees and bushes? What are the kids gonna get out of that?
Were you here when I speak?
No.
No. Michael Kidd came and addressed that. That's just a rendering. Those bushes don't have to be there. That tree don't have to be there. The focus was the basketball court.
Let's keep it on the basketball court instead of taking everything away from it.
It was never about it. It was never not about that.
We know what it's about, Sylvia. Yes.
I'm more than willing to have a conversation with you.
I didn't think so. Listen to that.
We don't. Oh, we do. We're good.
Hi, I'm, uh, Douglas Swanson. I live in Laurel Lakes. I think personally, as all you adults are sitting up here, can't agree on two parts for the kid. Use this down here for the little ones. It keeps the bigger kids away from them if you're so concerned about all the dumb stuff. But go up there and get something set up for those kids up there as well. Get them swing sets, a basketball court. Come up with some ideas. Because this is what the money's being given to us to do. And when y'all sit and nitpick and say, oh, no, I don't approve, I don't approve, you're thinking of yourselves. You ain't thinking of the kids. You don't think of the kids at all. You're too busy worrying about yourselves. Get together, act like adults. You're doing it for the children. You're acting more like the kids than the kids would. Give them someplace to go, enjoy, and have a good time. They live here in Nelson too. Not all of us, not just us. These kids live here too. Are you saying you don't want your kid playing somewhere? You don't want your kids playing somewhere? You're taking from the kids. Just remember that. Do something for the kids. Stop nitpicking. Act like adults.
My name's Buck Grandham. I live three five four North Avenue. There's a bunch of elderly people on my street. I agree with her. My dad's seventy-seven. He don't wanna hear no damn basketball bounce and all that all live. So then again, take into consideration from the elderly people around here that wants a peace and quiet of a night.
Well, there's also the solution of putting a fence around it and lacking the gate.
Put it down here.
Yeah, nobody lives right here. Put it down here where it does not.
What they're saying though is, a lot of people aren't paying attention. That because of the drainage down here, it would not work for a basketball court.
They're all about a park. They're only taking all the things. It's hard for us to keep any record of this. If you can try to come up and make your full public comment, and then someone else may disagree with you, but you come make your public comment, and then move on to the next public comment.
Is this park planned? Did you, did the city council pass a, uh, capital improvement budget? Is this on the budget?
It is.
How did you pass a budget, a capital budget with this, a plan like this on there, and three people are against it? Blows my mind. Blows my mind. What, what? What did you put it on the capital budget for if you're not gonna vote in favor of it? I don't care whether it gets passed or not, but if you, you're supposed to do it the right way. You're supposed, if you pass a capital budget, you have items on it, you're supposed to...
Do you wanna say that again?
Oh, I just wanna, you go find that.
I'm Brenda Hanks. Brenda, you're up. David is my husband, Nathan is my son. And I consider most of the people up here that I know friends. But y'all are making them out to be the bad guys. They are, they haven't said they're against anything. But they have said they've asked for numbers the last, this much for meetings, asked for numbers. Don't think we've got those yet.
You did get them. They're, it's a hundred and fifty-three thousand.
How much everything's gonna cost?
You can't get, I can't get a price.
Okay, that's enough.
Concrete.
But you take it to the paper, and you put David's, David's name, Nathan's name, Martha's name in there, the flyer that's here.
That's not my flyer.
I don't care whose flyer it is.
It's not mine.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be outlet with the name on it. Because to me, that's not the bullying tactic.
That's not the city flyer.
That is absorbing tactics. Not if, not if you put some, what if your name was on there and you, and they didn't like what you said? That would be all right with you? I don't think so. I'm just saying, y'all are going about this the wrong way. We need to fix up what we have, what's been in this the whole time, and then start on that up there. Or go ahead and do the court. Go ahead and do the court, redo the court. But start on some of this too, 'cause that, that is dangerous, very dangerous. I just wish you would not put people's names in the paper unless they had a chance to.
I didn't put, I didn't do those.
The paper was quoted by you.
I put a.
My son Dustin's name was in that paper, and he's not even on the council.
The, and that, I just put Dustin's name in there. I wrote a press release.
Okay, I have a paper at home. I'll bring it next time.
Get it out, 'cause I have a copy of it. It's the only one I've read. I didn't put that there. I wrote my press release, and then they, they did a pre-clue to it. I did not do that.
Defamation of character. Let's see if there's any further public comment.
I will talk to you if you would like to talk. If not, shut it.
No.
Yeah.
I have.
Either that or get out. You're out of order. One of the two. Done.
I'd like to invite the progress, take pictures of what we took here and post that in papers and facts, real facts. We've done both sides, both sides.
Now, I mean, the Cherokee Tribune had a real nice article, but it stated facts.
It did. They got the facts straight from me. It's exactly where they got them. You can call them and ask them, Brenda.
I will.
Please do. And I'll give you the guy's name.
I have it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they wanna say about, um, for public appearance?
I ain't going to address that. Because I did have somebody come in today and ask. I have no idea who sent it out. I, as far as I'm, I mean, Sylvia didn't have anything to do with it, 'cause I actually called her and asked about it. I had somebody actually ask me if Mike Adlin sent it out.
Mike had a pretty obvious.
We didn't have anything to do with it, but I'm just, in regards to that, I didn't get one in my mailbox. I had somebody bring me one today and check me, so.
I got it in my mailbox.
I know. We, 'cause you came in and I have one that somebody brought here.
Isn't it illegal to place stuff in somebody's mailbox?
It was sent, it has an EDM thing on it, so it was posted.
I've had people tell us that they were placed in the mailbox.
There's postage paid. If you looked on the bottom, I think it has a thing where it's paid.
Not bad. Like, it was a piece of paper. Not this, the one that sent out at the last meeting. It didn't have the postage square on it.
See, and I don't know anything about that one. The only one that came in the city mailbox is the one that Lauren has the card. The city did not send that. And the yellow thing, I never got that one, but I had somebody brought that one in today and asked me about it. But it's not coming from us, just to throw it out there.
So if there's no further public comment, I'd suggest since we opened it, voting to close it, so it would be done after that unless anyone has any problems.
Lady back there.
I just have one thing. Sylvia, you've always been very fair and very just. We're so lucky to have you. The reason I'm here tonight, this was put in my mailbox. It's these three names right here. Two Hammys and Martha. I think that's wrong. We're singling them out. Why do people, some, who comes up to their house and protest or whatever, I don't know, you know? I just don't think they should be singled out in that fashion or expecting their opinions. You know, whether, I don't have a dog in the fight. That's one thing. And whether I'm opposed or not, that's beside the point. It's just, I don't think this one's fair. I don't know who did this or who put it in my mailbox. But it's not fair to duck three council members to single them out. And I don't even, I didn't think you saw it, Sylvia. That's one thing.
I did, I did not see it. I got a copy of it, the same thing that Cassie brought in.
I wouldn't think you would approve of that. I really don't. Thank you.
Make a motion to close, uh, public appearance.
I agree. I'll say it.
Susan, make a name. On paper. Discuss and vote on, um, insurance titles for city employees. Is this something we do out here?
It was in our budget. Budget. It was technically free, but it's been.
Which ones are right?
Reasons, it didn't actually.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't give it out.
Yeah, it's not a specific employee.
Past couple of years, cities looked into possibility of health insurance for, um, full-time city employees. The cost has been exorbitant for the city and employees. In the past, the cities offered stipend and was providing insurance. This year's budget had a line item for insurance stipend. They pay able to each full-time city employee in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars. For transparency reasons, we wanted to make sure it was very public and everyone knew about it. Um, inhabit a written policy and report it in the minutes. Um, we looked into it. It was gonna be, what was I thinking about? A thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars for the city and employee. It was a lot. It was almost three thousand dollars. Mark and I had insurance. I mean, just, we have two city employees that do not and need, need insurance.
We have two, so two full-time city employees that, that, that need insurance. And we do have.
There's a prescription that's not being showed. There's something that needs to be done. Yeah, well, this is just starting out, but because in the budget, and just when I was doing the minutes, I didn't see that it didn't mention and talked about. So I wanted to make sure before any check was issued that it was made very public, so it didn't come back to be issued later on. So that's what we're backing here, just to make sure. It's technically, since it's in the budget, voted on, I think it's okay, but, yeah.
We just wanted to make sure. That's record. And if the number that you had is set up.
Yes.
While, while we're discussing it, have y'all looked into like an HRA? 'Cause if you put that in an HRA, they can use their opinion of it untaxed.
I think Sylvia had looked into some of it.
We did. We looked at the piggybacking with the county, we can either one. We, we, I did a number of things. And it, the cheapest way was to just do what's happening.
Well, I mean, instead of giving them, if you give it to them on a check, they're not gonna pay taxes on it.
No. It's a way to be respectful, because Lauren, you went to work on the design, and you're on the office, and you went to work with some company in Atlanta. They gave him a stipend for insurance that you provide your employees instead of providing it, even though we did try to.
The most positive effective way, we talked to D.C. Joe as well, the most positive effective way was to write a check, a separate check, the monthly.
So it's a tax-free.
It's supposed to be, it's having to double-check, it needs to be set up to double-check that it's.
Yeah, it's a tax-free. I mean, you don't have to have a record, but then you need to pay insurance, don't you?
'Cause we don't, Lauren. 'Cause we used to get a stipend for stall.
I mean, I don't think it would be an issue because one has kids and the other one has a lot of medicine that he can't.
I was just thinking of how like, you know, like all the work for, to take that access.
Yeah, I, like I said, I called the county, um, both counties, to try and see if there was a way to do it differently.
I wish we could think that as a piggyback, but I don't know, they could have real.
They may be able to set up their own individual HSA, which is similar at the bank.
Yeah.
And they may not do that. I don't, I don't know, I mean, how that would work. And that would be on them though, not the city. This is just a means to try and help with some medical.
Yeah, as long as, as long as I can get it untaxed, so I can use, you know, any other medical stuff. I'll play for it.
On paper. Our advisement, um, repayment of tax proceeds to Cherokee County due to computer error. I guess I won't use that one because it's.
Cherokee County had, it was an auditing, one of their audits actually talked us. They had implemented a new software in their system, I guess, before, ready, and which caused an overpayment to all of the cities. And our overpayment for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one totaled ten thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. It was for the, um, taxes. So we turned around and just cut the check and we're done with it. So we repaid it. It's done, washed, but just so that maybe. Ten thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and eighteen cents. Um, it dispersed, the amount that they sent us was eleven thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. The correct amount was supposed to be three hundred fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents, which caused an overage of ten thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and eighteen cents. Well, then we were more than happy to keep that. They still sent it. So we cut them the check immediately. I think we're actually the first ones to pay it. Or just.
It was a lot more for us.
I talked to Maria, and we just wanted it off the books. They had the same thing with Jazz at one point, where they sent us, Pickens, it sends Jazz first, ninety, T-T taxes, and then sent them ours. And we just cut checks, but.
So it's.
It's, it's been repaid.
Is this just Pickens County?
No, this is Cherokee County.
Cherokee?
Yep. And we already paid it. It's taken care of, but that way if anybody sees some of the Jack check, or my bank statements, or it's copies of the Jack sets, which.
And it is repaid on May or June.
I wanna say James, I think it's, um, not within here, so I don't.
Any other questions about the tax payment, bringing in Cherokee County? Can I get a motion to, or?
I'm not sure.
I'll make it.